I'll just make copies.
I gave him.
Okay. There we go. Nice warm copies, too. Okay, we're ready to go then?
Yeah, it's going.
It's going live then? Great. Welcome to the Atkins City Council meeting for today, December fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. Let's ask all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, calling the roll, EJ Bell.
Present.
Samantha Peterson.
Present.
Jim Kane.
Present.
And David Fisher.
Present.
Trevor Dersky is absent, and he had indicated so before the meeting. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to have a work session for the water system. At this time, I'll introduce Nick Eisenbacher, city engineer, and ask Nick to provide a presentation. Thank you, Nick.
All right, so in October meeting, I think we kind of discussed, kind of going through some of the history and at least kind of the timeline. Some of the studies have been done and kind of get, you know, where, how did we get to where we got, you know, where we got to with the Ploner Engineering Report that was submitted in twenty nineteen timeframe? And then kind of see where you guys want to go as a council for moving forward. So if you've got questions or need anything clarified, just let me know as I'm going and I'll go from there. So first, I want to kind of go through a quick timeframe. You know, the, some of this stuff that we've started talking about, a lot of stuff that we've added in our CFP is started in, in part of the twenty, two thousand and three report that was kind of started the water system studies that included water plants, well three upgrades to well two. So between two thousand and three and two thousand and ten is kind of when that study was done, updated. Well, three was constructed. There was pilots for, you know, what type of treatment the city wanted for water treatment plant, which ended up being the RO system because that was what was successful in treating the city's water, increasing the capacity of well number two so that it could send water to the new water treatment plant. They did not have the capacity required for the RO system and then drilling well three and getting that fully constructed. So the, through that process, you know, we recommended that the city build an RO treatment system that'll treat one hundred percent of the city's water. Some systems are able to bypass or blend water so it doesn't go through the RO system because of the high ammonia that was not possible for the city. So you guys have a unique situation in the sense that a hundred percent of the water that's treated goes through the RO systems. That pulls out a lot of minerals, a lot of, along with the, you know, it pulls out ammonia and the bad, the, the, bad contaminants, but it also pulls out a lot of good stuff. So the city does have to add that stuff in through chemical addition. So the current plant, if both skids run, can produce one hundred gallons a minute. DNR implements the well pumping to twenty hours, so you can produce four hundred and eighty thousand gallons. There was some growth thought of when we designed the plant. So there's room and capacity to add a third RO train. So you could, in theory, produce six hundred gallons a minute or seven hundred and twenty thousand gallons a day through your current, current system. Along with that, you also have a gas scrubber that takes a hydrant sulfide that is already built with a capacity of six hundred gallons a minute, so that wouldn't necessarily need to be upgraded. Along, within that report, there was also discussions about phase, you know, what they called phase two and three would be, you know, adding to work well and then constructing additional finished water storage and a third RO on the plant. There wasn't really any timeframes or like real strict timeframes for when it should be done. Just guidelines of, you know, in five, every five, ten years, you should re, you know, reevaluate the city's need for those as you're growing. You don't want to, obviously, we don't want to get to the point where you need them next year. And, and you. So through that, once that kind of stage is done, that ended about two thousand and ten. So with that, then there was, in two thousand and twelve, the city got a new MPDS permanent plant, which doesn't directly affect the water side except for funding, and that's a lot of cash going out because that required a new plant to be built to handle wastewater for the growing city. As, as that was kind of being under construction, there was newer, newer developments being added, new homes. And of course, those were in some of the higher areas of town. So then there started to be calls or concerns about the water pressure within the city. So that started about two thousand and seventeen. Two thousand and eighteen is when I think we were contracted to then do a report to look at the pressure within the town and see what, you know, what are the pressures within the town at various points and what can be done to improve those pressures. That'll kind of be the bulk of what I'm going to talk about here within this presentation. So that was submitted to the DNR in twenty, at the end of twenty nineteen, approved in twenty twenty. So as a part of that study in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, is we went through and did, and used old maps, most of which we kind of created, but kind of went through and verified that pipe sizes, pipe materials throughout the whole city. So it's mainly, mostly four inch mains throughout what would be considered like the old or the original part of the city of Atkins, and then there's one stretch of six inch main, long main street. And then all of the newer additions on both east and west side of town are constructed with eight inch mains. We looked at, and this, it would be slide number eight, but it probably be the fourth page in your packet there. It's the loans of service. So then loans of service, we, this was provided as a part of the city's comprehensive plan. But it was something we would look at as we were doing our studies. As you can kind of see, kind of the, the water service limit is that it's a little hard to see on the printed version, but essentially it follows on the southern border of the city limit, it pretty much follows that. And then as you go up towards the, kind of goes though through the wastewater plant and then in the north a little bit. So all of the Ridgeview addition is covered within that. Right now, it's showing some of Stone Ridge, at least the kind of last line of lots is, is on that edge. And that's something we would look at if they were ever to formally build there and provide them that sort of feedback that, you know, this is potentially not. Then the limit is where it's going to be, you know, at that point where the city wouldn't be able to provide the DNR minimum water pressure. And so that, that kind of helps give us an idea of, you know, from a growth perspective, where can the city grow? How much can you grow? And then where, how can we move that line in the future? So kind of just to expand upon, kind of what the existing system looks like. The city currently has two water towers, one built nineteen thirty-nine, one built in. I have ninety-seven, but ninety-seven, ninety-eight somewhere there.
It started in ninety-six and completed in ninety-eight.
Okay. And then there's an underground storage at the plant. So it gives you currently a combined total of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand gallons. Within the two thousand and seven update of the report that was done, it provided a recommendation of, it was four hundred and some thousand, four hundred and some thousand gallons of water storage, what was proposed or projected to be needed within twenty, thirty years of, of that report. So obviously, it's short of what you guys have now, but to, to go and just add, you know, another two hundred thousand gallons of, of water storage at this point is, is not a great idea just because of trying to balance production and demand. And too much water, you could create old water, you have waters, then you have a whole nother set of issues with that. Trying to manage that, that side within the storage tank, which is not ideal. So what we had proposed to do is increase that storage by a hundred and ten thousand because we would then, we would remove the elevated water tank from the nineteen thirties, which is forty thousand gallons, and build a new hundred and fifty thousand gallon storage. So this would provide you guys additional storage for expansion and growth. Would also reduce kind of a maintenance issue with the nineteen thirties with elevated tank as it does have lead paint within, you know, at the very interior of it. So there's additional maintenance the city has to do to keep that from leaking through. And then also that would help provide, and what we had recommended would be additional pressure within the low pressure areas of the city. Kind of talked about the two wells. So the current, the city currently has two wells. Well, three can produce up to five hundred gallons a minute, while two can produce fifty gallons a minute. It's important to note on those that because of the RO system, it currently rejects or sends fifty thousand or fifty gallons a minute to waste. And that's essentially all of that, the ammonia and all those. Everything it removes from the water gets rejected, and so you waste roughly fifty gallons a minute. So the wells have to produce an extra fifty gallons a minute versus what you can provide into the distribution system. So it would be.
Nick, can you pull up your, where was that six inch line on mains?
Uh, that's, so that's, that's the downtown section block of it.
Just from First to Railroad's.
Correct. Yep.
No, from First to Hart Ridge.
No, no.
The other way around. It goes through, at least what we have through.
The water main in the, in the original, in the business block is still.
It's a business.
That's a.
Okay, but it's, it's not the new, I'm sorry.
Yeah, six inch, that's the oddball. There was a six inch wide down.
I misunderstood oddball.
That's correct.
Yeah. I, that's what I thought, too. That wasn't true.
Yep.
I don't, you don't have that on the plank, or I just wanted to work that up.
Yeah, and I can get you a color copy of this, too. So I did put some water usage stats on here. Currently, you use on average just a few gallons per capita per day. And you have a historical peak factor of two point six seven, or two point six two. So essentially, what the means is during your winter months, your, your low usage months, you're roughly using a hundred, just on a hundred and ten thousand gallons a day. But during the summer, during your peaks, you're using about two hundred and eighty-six thousand gallons a day. So those are, those are kind of important to, to note as you're, as we're looking at storage and, and treatment capacity. Because we also need to have demand for when you have fires. So can you provide fire flow? Can you provide fire volume? And those are kind of, and, and that becomes a little tricky because DNR requires one thing. The insurance office likes another set of numbers and funding only pays for a certain portion of that. So that, that's kind of where usually there becomes a, a capacity discussion with DNR and the funding agency, and do you guys need extra, extra, uh, storage for fire flows? You guys currently don't have a large quantity of commercials, so where you would then, you would, like Cedar Rapids might have additional capacity in some of their towers just for potential commercial fire flows, that situation. Kind of talks about the treatment side of things. So to start our, the, the next kind of part of the study we did was we figured out, you know, what the water main sizes, where they located. And then Todd and I went out and did several hydrant tests throughout the city. Said we did seventeen of them. All the numbers are listed or kind of on your slide there. I put three kind of that are different parts of the city. So you can kind of see that, you know, even like number three, which is in the Ridgeview addition, is probably the highest hydrant cap the city has. You're still providing seven hundred gallons a minute at twenty PSI. So which is above the DNR minimum. Doesn't quite meet what the insurance ISO office kind of wants to see for that. And you'll see that in the next, a later on slide, but the city can't still produce or provide the DNR minimum required fire flows at that point. You can see that at, like, over on, like, B Avenue, where you're being fed off a lot of four inch mains. You have a higher pressure at thirty-five PSI, and you're, you're getting a thousand gallons a minute. So it's kind of nice to, I like to see this because it does show that water, that the size of the water main also plays a part of it, not just the pressure. So what would, what I've listed as Appendix B, so it'd be like the, you know, your seventh and eighth pages. That, that starts to show what we've modeled as the pressures throughout this town, or throughout the city at a couple of different levels. One is the first one, which is at the minimum tower level. I don't, Todd doesn't run it always to the minimum tower level, but this was just to show what those pressures were. And kind of what this shows is, you know, kind of what we have been hearing from consumers was, you know, the, the Ridgeview areas, the dead ends along, within Pleasant Quarters or Pleasantville area, and then a few areas in Cardinal or kind of as higher, or at least have a dead end out there. They've got lower pressures that are close to that DNR recommended thirty-five PSI. So for pressure, DNR requires a minimum of twenty PSI under all flow conditions, so essentially fire flow conditions, and then a normal working pressure of thirty-five PSI. Now, if you look into ten state standards, they do list those as well, but they also list what they call like a consumer preference, a recommended operating range is, I believe, anywhere from like fifty to eighty PSI. And then anything above ninety PSI, they start to recommend that you start to reduce pressures, which obviously we don't have that issue here. But it's good to note those pressures. And then we also, at the time, the Stone Ridge was kind of just starting. So we had looked at there, and it kind of shows what loans of service kind of indicate was, you know, the, those far south hydrants potentially are going to be at that, that minimum. And you potentially see a lot of the same complaints or consumer complaints that you would see in Ridgeview, especially on those, that south end. The last little map in Appendix B is kind of those modeled fire flows. The first number in the NFF is the needed fire flow. That's based on the, the insurance office requirements. And that's a, it's an equation that takes into account space of the building, the type of building, use of the building. So like for a residential, like down in Ridgeview, you know, the ISO recommends a thousand gallons per minute. The schools, around seventeen hundred gallons per minute. They've got sprinkler systems, so they get a bit of a credit there. And then the lumber yards and that, that three thousand gallons per minute, which is, for most cities, is fairly impossible to provide unless there's a dedicated water storage and fire system for that, which I've seen. But that's, it's, uh, it's not necessarily common, especially for smaller communities. So Appendix C is where we started to look at different ways to boost the pressure within, within the city. And some of it was, we, we started off with having discussions with, you know, the city and public works about, well, how much of this, how much do you want to boost the pressure? And what parts of town do you want to boost the pressure? And currently, there's a lot of old and aging four inch mains within the old part of town. So there's, there's, there's some hesitation, concern with, when you boost the pressure, you then start to put a lot more stress on those mains, and then you start to cause a lot more water main breaks, which is not really ideal. Because then those just become costs that are unexpected and a lot of emergency repairs. So with that, we, we talked about, and we decided that we should basically create two pressure zones within the city of Atkins. One that would keep the pressure the same or what it is today within the existing part of town, and then boost the pressure to a more of a consumer preference level within the, the edges of town, Cardinal, both east, west side. And then obviously, those would start to head south as developments would continue on. So the first one we kind of talked about was adding a fourth pump to the plant. Although from a capital cost perspective, it was economical. It's not really practical from any sort of long-term perspective because we would just be using space that could be used for either treatment or other pumps for pumping into the system. And so it was really more of a, kind of a Band-Aid type of situation. And so that was one that we, we looked at, but not one we would really prefer or recommend. The city kind of prefer or move forward with. Is it really just kind of limit you in the future and then potentially adds costs later on? We did look at doing a standard loan booster station to, to boost the pressure. So this, this would, this is an option that we've seen before. But the, kind of the downside to this is it, it takes care of one problem or one issue. That's the pressure, but it doesn't necessarily start to solve some of those other future needs, such as additional water storage. It, it kind of, or replacing some of the water mains or. So there's, there's a few things where it's a good, a good solution, but not necessarily a great long-term solution for the city. And some of those are kind of listed on the, the next page there. The, the next two options that we looked at were, were dealt with the tower, the towers themselves. The first one was raising the tower. So the, the one that is over here by the water plant from nineteen ninety-seven, you know, it's new enough that we talked to a couple of water tower contractors, and they indicated that it would be possible to raise it. There's a few questions unknowns that would need to be dug into further, such as foundations, trying to figure out if those would still, the existing ones would work with raising the tower. But that would solve, raising the tower would solve the pressure issue. Obviously, it doesn't get rid of the, you know, the nineteen thirties tower, kind of that maintenance issue. And it doesn't solve the storage, storage needs for the city for future growth. And then the, the option that we, we kind of ended up going with and recommending along the way, well, after we talked to the city, we kind of were all on board with this option was taking down the old, the nineteen thirty-nine water tower, which is forty thousand gallons, and building a new hundred and fifty thousand gallon tower. This would create two pressure zones because we, we would raise the tower so it would be taller than the two towers that you have now. There'd be a little, a small set of booster pumps on site that would get the tower, the water into the tower. And then some new, we would construct some new water mains to then get the water from that new tower, tall tower, into the distribution system and then off to either ends of the city. The, you know, the appeal to this was, you know, removing kind of the maintenance issues with the old forty thousand gallon tower and increase the pressure on either side of the, you know, all the low pressure areas. It also increased current water storage. So those are kind of some key, you know, pros or advantages to this that we went, that we thought was a good idea. At the time, we thought it was, there was still, the, the fire station was still located there north of Railroad. So we were going to do this on the site that the current tower is on. Obviously, with subsequent, with, with events that have happened since this report was done, we've had discussions about putting the new tower kind of where the old fire station was. And, and making it a little easier for construction and getting water maintenance to, from each end of town from, from that location. Since the, I've done and sent in and approved, there's been some further discussions from people, from different entities that have kind of come in in the city. So like I discussed, changing the water tower location. There was talk of looking at a ground storage tank and doing a booster station type system, which is something that works and is used in, in several other communities. There are pros and cons to it. The pros somewhat, you know, you kind of, the ground storage tank's a little easier to maintain. In this instance, I would, I would probably recommend looking at like a pre-stressed concrete tank. So it's got a little bit of a higher capital cost, but there's no O and M cost really, besides cleaning it. You know, repainting them, they last, it's a concrete tank, so they last quite a long time. But then you have higher O and Ms because you're constantly running the booster pumps. And there's some increased electrical and controls costs just from boosting, boosting the, the pressure and then having pumps for a normal operation and then a fire flow situation and then having backup power. So it's, it's, you know, potentially it's somewhat of a wash from a capital cost perspective just when you start to add in those other costs. But, you know, tank itself, they're, they're cheaper than an elevated tank, but it's the other costs that kind of start to get, to add up. But so that's one potential option that we could still go to. It does, it does increase the chance of issues within the, the water system or the distribution system just because sometimes the, the pumps have a tendency to create more water hammer, especially when you have high flow events, fire events. when you have high-flow events, fire events. You start to have, start to see an increase in those kind of issues, but those potentially can be few at first, and then, you know, as you have an aging water main, water system, you kind of start to see those things fail sooner. And then I know at last October, there was a question about potentially finding a different, higher ground for that, for those water mains, and that was kind of talked about loosely in the 2020 timeframe. And when we looked at that, a couple areas basically south of here, and then south of like Circle View area, and from a capital cost perspective, they are the most, because we are, and that's not even, so what I've shown on the slides for those costs, they don't include land acquisitions, so I'm not sure how much that would cost the city, but you know, it would be more, because we'd be running a lot more water main to get to those sites. We'd be more running water main not only to the site, then we'd go out to wherever we're connecting within the distribution system. So it's kind of the downside to those, is we're kind of running a lot of water main for, right now, undeveloped areas, whereas some of the other locations, yes, we had planned to run more new water main along railroad, however, there's existing buildings, or there's always, there's a lot of potential to expand north as well, so that new water main could be used for those kind of, for those developments and growth.
On the west side, if we went that way, we'd have a higher initial cost now, that would lower the cost if we moved in that direction and make that land much more attractive to future growth as far as both residential and commercial, right?
So it kind of depends, if you're talking to be one south.
If it looks like that's the way the town is gonna grow.
Yeah.
We're gonna grow it. With Highway 30 out there, it's gonna push that way, and if we're gonna do any commercial development, it's gonna be easier to get the commercial people on that side because of the traffic flow and stuff than it is on the north side.
Yeah, but a lot of commercial development, as long as you get the water to them and enough pressure, they're not gonna care if the tower's next to them or not.
No, no, I'm just saying that if we had that, what the price of the mains and stuff now, we'd end up having to pay that later to get that out there, and it wouldn't be as attractive. We aren't showing, they don't care where the tower is, they're looking for just mains and getting the buy-in from them.
Sure. And then, you know, for the one that's south of here, I placed it within city limits. Circle View's off the city limits, so anything that's south of there would have mechanics in, so you'd obviously want, you'd want the land that the tower's on to be within city limits, so they're viable options if the city wants to further explore them. There is more capital cost in fault of those, but there's potential for reuse or refueller as well. And then last appendix there is just, is what we prioritized, 1, 2, 3, 4, are four different priorities for water main replacements within the town, as I mentioned, a lot of, a lot of this area that's shown is four-inch cast iron mains that are 70, 80, potentially getting up to 90 years old. And the concern is, in the ones we picked, we were trying to create routes to important features within the city, so school to the lumberyard and to existing Main Street, and creating eight-inch routes to there increases the amount of fire flow you can get regardless of the pressure you have. And, you know, it was something that we kind of noticed that all of this, current, all entities, commercial developments, all that was still being fed off four-inch mains. So these priorities were set to increase that fire flow protection, which would then hopefully increase, you know, maybe some developments in Main Street, or, you know, just provide the school with, you know, a better, better fire flow protection, so.
So Nick, I've heard you say multiple times tonight, for future growth. And what I did is I went through and I just did some simple math, okay, given the fact that all your numbers are correct. Our current wastewater, our current water treatment facility produces 480,000 gallons over a 20-hour period, correct?
Correct.
That's 9,230 people that it could supply, all right? You said the maximum we've ever used is 286,000 gallons in a day's period.
As of, that would be as of 2020.
But we could bump it up to 24 hours even, but my point was, we're still at 9,000 citizens, over 9,000 citizens for our treatment facility. You said if we're gonna increase, we can increase it with another RO skid to 600 gallons per minute for 720,000 gallons in a day's period. That's 13,846 people that we would have residents that would have been treated.
So with your numbers, you will need, you will want to subtract the fire flow?
Understood.
Okay.
I'm just putting...
No, I understand, I just...
The city currently has two water towers. I'm not done. The city has two water towers, okay, for 268,000 gallons, right?
It also includes underground storage.
Understood, understood, sorry. The old water tower has 40,000 gallons. In a day's period of time, that's 769 people that that could produce in a day, 24-hour period of time. Our current capacity is 5,153 people. Capacity, that's in a, that's just in storage to be used. So if you subtract that, if you just tore down the old water tower and took that completely out of the equation, that still supplies in storage for a 24-hour period of what people use, that's 4,384 systems.
So you're not used all up? Sorry, I was right there, good. All right, so, so the miss, the, you're correct in your numbers, at least I haven't checked your math, but I understand what you're going for. The misleading thing about the capacity is it's not your effective capacity, so you can't actually use 150,000 gallons, because if you do, you don't have pressure in Ridgeview.
I get that, I get that. But you're gonna replace it too, because you got, you got, you got everything else that can work in conjunction.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that.
I'm just trying to put points out there. My point, my point is, with that aspect, we don't need more storage immediately, or even anytime close in the future.
I think, I see where you're, I see where you're talking, what you're...
As long as we don't have a fire.
Well, it's like, the tricky part is, is the city currently doesn't have a lot of commercial. And so one of the key ways to grow your commercial is to have fire, you know, water capacity, because if you have a large commercial that wants to come in and use a lot of water, then that starts to eliminate from that, from that number.
Okay, but we gotta look at the now. I mean, I've been here for 15 years, and you know, it's, nothing's to give you. And at the rate we're going, we're never gonna get anything. So it's like, the pressures is what we need now, is what residents want, that's...
All right, let me finish what I was wanting to say here. We have wells that can produce 900,000 gallons in a 20-hour period. That would, essentially, that's not the 50-gallon loss in the process or anything, but that's 17,307 people that it could produce for in a 24-hour period. Again, the RO, it was kind of redundant how we talked about it. 240,000 gallons per day per skid, that's 480,000 gallons. I, if, I've come to the conclusion that, given all this information, and my simple math makes no sense for a new water tower. Makes no sense. It doesn't make sense to even raise that one, but there's gotta be a different way that we can, we can get the pressure out there. And we should be exploring that, that's where we should be putting our resources, is getting the water pressure out there.
We, well, so that was, those were options 1 and 2. We're just putting, we're essentially creating two pressure systems, and two pressure zones.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not trying to take, that's where I would put my focus, just using the general information that I've got.
No, I understand. So that would be options 1 and 2, and we, and the location of those pumps don't necessarily be where those options are. So one thing that could we look at, we could look at is setting this up such that you could, like, so what I, I've talked about adding, you know, putting in a new water tower at the old fire station, for example. So if the city, the council would like, pressure is paramount to your storage, we could set it up where we, set that piece of property up for full, but not build full, if that makes sense. So that way, your, that way, if you need to build more water storage because of growth in the future, you can do so fairly seamlessly. And that's kind of one of the, you know, I just, that was kind of why we eliminated at least the first option we, that was, that we requested to look at, was because it really just didn't make sense for any, for the future, or it really didn't make sense even for then was, because it took up space within your water plant. But a standalone booster station, which is not uncommon, is something that we could certainly look at and do, and place it in someplace that allows you guys to grow in the future more seamlessly.
Yeah, I, one thing I want to throw out, got to help our thinking, it's not even flow all day, there's twice a day where there's more water going out.
I know that, Tom.
Than what comes in.
I know that.
And that, and then during the summer, you can have all day more water going out than what's coming in. So, I mean, there's a reason, you know, once the plant starts the afternoon, it takes until 2 o'clock in the morning to fill things up. And during the occasions where I've had to let the system get to half because of maintenance or in advance, I mean, it'll take me three days to get things full again. So if we're, if we're brushing teeth and washing hands, yeah, then we got the 52 gallons a day of water. But we got a few weeks in the spring when we're filling pools, I mean, if there's ever a dream of a splash, that, I mean, there's no way of any aqua, anything until we're doing, I mean, fair fact, they'll go through 200,000 gallons a day in a splash event. So if there's any of those things, those are off the table until, like I say, so, I just want to throw that out there, there's, it's not an even thing all day. There are highs and lows, and like you say, for multiple panels, or multiple times, there's a lot more water going out than what's being built, so.
I totally get that. The number still doesn't say that.
I mean, it's all up to you guys. If, I mean, I would love to have it, if, I hate that the city gets blamed for this, that the people in the town thinks that the water is all conspiracy, it's just, if I could, if I could give more water pressure and teach people the water goes downhill, they'll like acquit it every day. But they're, I mean, that's all everybody complains about. So I would love to be able to fix this, but I'm not gonna change.
Well, I want to fix it too. I just don't want to waste money. I don't want to waste money.
Right. And then what Nick was talking about, pressure, Blairstown was a good example, 15 years ago, they raised, or they built a taller tower, they put it online, they boosted 20, boosted the whole town, about 25 pounds, 19 water main breaks later, they shut off the new tower, went back to the old tower, and they replaced all the water mains in town. And last I know, they still got a $12 surcharge on our water bill to pay for that. So that's my fears about, kind of what Nick was talking about, booster pumps and surges in the system. Yeah, it's one advantage, you'll have a low water pressure, because we don't have hard day breaks.
Yeah, I mean, there's gotta be a way to get the pressure and shut it off on lines. I don't think anybody's gonna say, you know, fix the line, I think that's...
Say what?
I mean, you gotta fix the lines, I don't think anybody's gonna complain about that.
No, but we're, I mean, you're talking...
It's just getting, doing them at the same time isn't gonna be ideal.
And the one thing, when we're talking, you know, when we pressurize east side of town, one thing about running that high-pressure main on railroad connected to one the other, you would give your fire flows to so many of your assets, your downtown, because you can tap off to that high-pressure main, you've got hydrants on there, so then your lumberyard, your Atkins, your businesses downtown, we would have access to some major water without actually having to immediately replace the old mains.
And Nick, when you talk about water storage, is there a 70-day supply that's factored into that? As far as the three days?
Just because you have, your water plant can help supplement as you're going. Or to, to your point, is you're currently using about 82, 83% of your storage capacity. It's spoken for between current usage, fire, 60,000 gallons for fire flow, so if that changes, obviously that's a different number, but, and then what's essentially been platted for residential, single-family, multifamily, commercial, about 82%, 83% of your current storage.
And that's a one-day supply?
Yeah.
You're talking about the 82% is one day?
If you have full storage today, you, in a, in a day with a fire, 60,000 gallons for fire, you'd have, you'd use 83% of that. But that 60,000 gallons is a 500-gallon per minute flow for two hours, which is the DNR minimum. That's not what's required, not required, I should say required, recommended by the insurance office. So that's where you kind of get the, that's where that extra storage comes in handy for your assets, your future growth, additional fire flow. So that's, that's obviously a choice the city would, would need to look at and make and, you know, see if it's worth, I mean, the money for today, or...
That fire flow thing is something a whole lot of people don't understand. You know, that, that is necessary. If we don't do that, and we can get by, especially in residential area, like he says, the residents are using that, huh? But if we ever get a DNR fire flow issue and ISO comes in, then all of the insurance rates are gonna change. And then, and that's nothing that's easy to get back, once the insurance rates start going up. And that was one of the things that I was really surprised at when we first started this. And that's friends over Eastville, and they're paying over 40% more for their house insurance than we are here, just because of the ISO that has to do with the fire department and
that has to do with the fire department and the water capabilities we have in this town. So that's something we have, and the people don't see that, I mean, they start yelling one thing, but it goes that way, and then everybody starts seeing that, then they're gonna come back and complain on something that we really don't have any to go over.
So Nick, are the, are the studies that you've done, they're really geared toward the DNR requirements?
Yep.
Right? And then does the ISO, the insurance requirements, match with the different set of analysis that you'd have to do, or could you?
We typically deal with the DNR, so we don't work with the ISO. We, in our report from twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen does go into the different requirements for the ISO to show you guys kind of what those are, and then we do point out different locations of, hey, this is what the needed fire flow is based on the ISO for this rating, so that way, a lot of cities do like to use this as a goal to, to help with insurance framing. You know, there's a balance with, especially small cities, can you, you know, how much does that cost the taxpayers to get it to like three thousand gallons, and then for the lumberyard is, is pretty, it's hard to obtain for a city, you know, side the back, it's just a lot of waters and, you know, unused essentially every day. Seventeen hundred gallons for the school, maybe that's a little, maybe that's a goal that the city shoots for, you know, a thousand for residential, so those are kind of the things that we use, but the DNR doesn't use those as their minimum requirements, so we don't, you know, we make sure we meet the DNR minimum, because that's who governs, you know, the, the, the water system here in the state of Iowa.
Then looking at the DNR minimums, are there DNR mid-range and DNR high range or anything like that?
Not for fire flows, they're pretty much just twenty PSI, five hundred gallons a minute, that's your minimum. The rest is up is for them, you know.
So any increase above that would be based on, uh, the community preference, I suppose, then?
Yeah, yeah. I'm trying to be, you know, that, like I said, a lot of communities try to shoot for some of those ISO numbers, but, you know, it is a balance. How much water do you want to store or produce and, and send out to the distribution system?
Thanks.
So the the booster pump option, you mentioned the option to set up, set that up at the old fire station location, and the advantage to that would be if we chose to not do the fire, the water tower, that would be a more seamless?
I, I think it would be in the future because you would have, we would, I would probably try to at least recommend that we would do it'd be the option four minus the tower type of thing. So we have a booster or, you know, whatever ground storage, we would try to set it up so it's, you know, we install additional mains and get it all set up so the city can build a booster pump station, boost the pressure out to the ends, get that ready, but then also have, you know, at least a preliminary site laid out for a tower or ground storage tank. So that way, it's like, it's not just a willy-nilly, here's a building and you need more for, if it's ten years, twenty years down the road, oh, well, that's not a good spot, you know. So that's kind of where I would recommend, if you didn't go, the option was at least set you guys up for an easy future project if you needed.
What would the other option for location be? I mean, that sounds like, for whatever we do, that seems like a pretty logical. If we own it and.
Yeah.
Good location, but would there be like, would there be another option, or is that kind of where we go?
Um, we, we talked about doing something over here at the park by the water plant. For, just because it's what the city owns, so it's a pretty easy thing. It's not, that, that was not necessarily ideal just from getting water out to those little pressure areas. Uh, it's a little more work to, we'd probably have to do a lot of boring to get to where we need to be. We had discussed, uh, kind of the Presbyterian church land, if there was some sort of agreement that could be done there, because we wouldn't need huge lot of land per se for this, but obviously that came with, that comes with challenges that, you know, we never really explored further. You know, we, we could look at, I know the city owns some other land, uh, along railroad, we could talk about doing it there, we could even look at doing something at the, um, the original water plant site if we, if we needed to. But those are, you know, we, the, the park was kind of our first choice at the time. Obviously, things have happened since that, would probably make other options better.
So under, and I apologize if you've already answered these questions, but under the, on the slide with other potential options, with the options to have the ground storage tank plus booster station, which is what we were just talking about, right?
Yep.
Booster station. Oh, it says there too. Is there just, I mean, you would recommend that those two things together would also go on that old fire station factory?
Yeah. Tank, or either an elevated storage tank, so water tower or a ground storage tank, I think would go there. And then there would be a booster station with either option, because you either gotta get it up into the taller tower, or we gotta go to the end of the system. So the putting, installing and doing a booster station type project can be reused regardless of which tower options it's later. If you pick the new tower option later, the pumps would probably be oversized, but you could slowly fix that as you need to replace pumps with time. If you did a ground storage option, then it would be a very seamless transition, just because you would have, you'd be still boosting the pressure, so the, the storage tank would just be for supplying the booster station with that water.
It says here that the tank portion would be more economical, but then the pump cost and the water cost would increase, so I wonder, do you have any of those estimated costs, like, for these options on, you know, that you have advantages on some of them are lower cost, disadvantages higher cost, but do you have an idea of how much those would be, including the option?
The, I do on the tank, the tanks would be about half a million dollars difference.
And that's the ground storage tank and booster station in total?
Uh, no, no, the tank portion would be about half a million. I would guess you'd probably look at another couple hundred thousand for the pumps and tanks, or pumps and generator, all those things, so you, I would estimate, you know, it'd be about three hundred thousand dollars cheaper right now. That, that is going with, the caveat to that, that would be going with a pre-stressed concrete tank, which I think is a little better of an option, because it's got a higher cap across, but no O and M. You can go with a ground steel tank. The issue with those is they do have to be taken out of service every five to ten years, repainted, cleaned, repainted, just like you would a water tower. So, um, where the ground steel tanks are more, are probably the most economical option upfront. You spend more over the lifetime because you're constantly painting it and maintaining it.
So you, the ground storage tank plus booster station, you said it's three, approximately three hundred thousand less than the new tower option, than the building a new hundred fifty thousand gallon tower option?
Correct.
Three hundred thousand dollars difference in those.
Yep. The, the rest of the project in terms of the water mains, the pressure using valves, those would all stay the same. So everything outside of that, that site would be the same. So we would just be looking at what size of building do you want, what size of, you know, generator, size of generating, those are the things that would start to increase, either change size, and then obviously the, the physical towers or water storage vessels that you would choose. And I know, and so, and I, I don't have a recent, um, ground, a steel tank, like ground storage steel tank. So I don't, I couldn't tell you what the additional capital cost increase would, you know, difference would be. I looked at, I, I did one recently, uh, looked at one of, there was a three million gallon tank, so, uh, quite a bit difference in cost here. And for that, I mean, it was, the, for that size of tank, the city would be saving like one point two million dollars over the lifespan of the tanks, just because of the extra O and M cost associated with those steel tanks. So it would be, um, the same magnitude or same scale here, but if you have, basically you have a similar magnitude, but not the same cost, like, you wouldn't save a million dollars, but you might save like five hundred thousand dollars over the cost lifecycle costs.
Nick, I don't expect you to have an answer to this, but I would be curious if, uh, a town that has the pressure boosting pumps, what their electrical bill is in a year. I could see that possibly being twenty to fifty thousand dollars a year higher than just having the pumps to fill the tower. That's just.
Yeah, I don't throw it out there. I don't have that.
Yeah.
Because some of it's gonna depend on what range we set it at too, so your pumps will in theory be running twenty-four hours, but they're just gonna boost to whatever the range needs to be.
Yeah.
And so when you, you know, from ten at night till five in the morning, those pumps might not run.
Right.
Because the range will be set such that your, the system isn't going to use that much water.
Yeah.
But.
Unfortunately, have some of the highest electrical rates.
Yeah.
That's a good point. Um, so I just want to make sure I understand the, this ground storage tank plus booster station option. Would you say, um, we're not comparing apples to apples because of the electrical cost and that type of thing, but would that, would the ground storage tank and booster station have the same advantages as you have listed here for the new hundred fifty thousand gallon tower as far as increasing the pressure? Fire flows, limits of service would also increase because you have more storage? Would you say that it needs those advantages?
As long as we would have appropriate backup power, the increased lengths of service would still be true. It would, all these would increase the pressure some, you know, in some capacity, whether it's through a pump or through a tower. Increase fire flow, so with the tower, it's, it's gonna be done through gravity and, um, that, you know, the, the water main sizes, whereas with the booster pump, it would be, we would have like a, we would have your normal usage pumps, and then we'd have one or two larger pumps that would maintain existing fire flow or increase it, you know, what the city pervert. So you would have that increased availability of fire flows. Uh, the pressure, you have to keep pressure at the same part of town, it's gonna be the same for all of them, limits of service is gonna be, if we make sure we have just backup power. If you went, so the, if you went too far, so in theory, if you had the tower, you could really start to push out towards thirty with your limits of service. With a booster pump station though, that's, you don't have the same increased lengths of service, uh, but it would increase what you currently have today. There's just more reliability with the power and keeping pressure way out there versus in a pump system. So if that was the case then, and honestly, if you start having that much growth, if you're going that far, you know, it, it might need another ground storage tank just to accommodate some of that growth anyway.
So if we, if we're concerned about the, um, increasing the limits of service, these are kind of the two options, the new tower and then the ground, the new ground storage and booster station.
Yep.
Are kind of the two options?
Correct.
If we're concerned about, which, you know, I, I see the value in that.
Correct.
It sounds like there are, you know, there are other opinions, you know, different opinions, but I see the value in one, or increase in that limit of service. And then if you're only, it's gonna be a large investment regardless.
Yep.
So when you're, in my head, you know, with all the complexities that come, that you just described with the ground storage tank and booster station, to save, you know, I don't know what percentage of three hundred thousand dollars is in the total, over the total investment.
So the ten percent, what, three, three point eight right now?
Three point eight.
Well, yeah, so the, oh, yeah, I put that on the slide, so the current EOPC would be around three point eight.
For which?
Oh, that'd be for the new tower.
Three point eight.
Yeah.
And these are current numbers, because now, is that where we're currently in now?
Yes. The, I, I specifically went and got a few of the key elements and got those re-estimated. Does the tower one up fifty-five percent from twenty twenty to today? Just the tower itself. So, um, I did make sure I went and got those, just because they've been so volatile.
I think what would be helpful for me at least is, because I think, I like how you have the advantages and disadvantages of each option laid out, but to see what, you know, what the costs are for each one, and then kind of weighing what we would save by going with the less expensive option versus what we, you know, like advantages we lose and disadvantages we gain with, with that.
So I, I do have on each of the slides with the option, like option one, I've got the cost is like one, just over a million dollars.
Oh, maybe I missed that.
It's on the bottom, your bottom left, right above the Snyder logo on each of those. So I do have some of those costs there. Obviously, if we were to, like, option two, for example, I have an EOPC listed, and then based on that location, it would change, like, that cost, maybe that is current to, if we were to put it in the fire station, old fire station location. So that could be something I would certainly look into updating from that perspective.
I, I totally missed those numbers.
Oh, no, it's fine, it's fine.
So the first options, we're looking, appendix C is kind of where those start, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So you've got, these are just the, the, the pressure.
Yeah, these are just, just for increasing pressure. Like I said, option two would probably, could probably redo option two if, if we, if the city thought about moving it up to like the old fire stations, because then it would change some of the water main improvements that we have shown here. So that EOPC would change to some degree.
That's the, the two million dollar option?
No, no, I'm sorry, it'd be option two, so it's the one point two five million dollar.
Okay.
So that number would change, because if we move it up north, that would change where we're doing some of those water main improvements.
If we do the booster pump, anyway, you have to perform either with or without the ground storage, would it be possible to isolate our existing mains from that hammering effect that's gonna happen with the pumps?
Yeah, so we would plan to just still have the two pressure zones regardless of what optional is chosen.
And that, that would isolate the cast iron from the hammering?
It would, yep, yep. Unless.
That'd be a real concern of mine, because if those pumps kick in and off, and with some of those old four inch mains there, then we're, we get into a emergency situation and have to replace all of those mains, and we can't plan that out, that is just really expensive.
Right. Unless the city wants to just rip the bandaid off and replace all the water mains first.
And that is happening, there's other guns that have been forced into that.
If you rip the bandaid off. And so, the way we had that set up was due to, uh, you know, just consumer complaints, we'd boost the pressure, deal with mains later. In theory, we could just replace all the water mains and then boost every one in town. The problem would be then you would, you, the downside to that is you potentially wouldn't be able to boost the lower end of town as much as you would, because you'd also start running into a maximum pressure within the existing.
We wouldn't be zoning then, it'd be.
Yeah. Yeah.
clean and out of the grid everything, uh, but then there's no zoning. As you expand sooner or later, zoning is gonna have to be something where it's gonna have to be considered.
But so like, right now, the, kind of the existing part of town is around fifty, fifty PSI, fifty-five, so say we bumped it up twenty PSI, so they'd be in the seventies. And then the other revenue would still be in the fifty, sixty, so that's where you, the dismantle that too, but.
Okay, alright, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, then to meet some target numbers here, the fire flows um, on the page where it shows the fire flow deficits, there are three locations. Um. One, two, well, there's actually four, I should say. But you, you mentioned that the three thousand gallons per minute for the for the lumberyard area is probably not attainable in a reasonable fashion.
Correct.
So would so for the remainder three, do all the, all the proposals meet the fire flows for those locations?
So, with the way it's currently set up, the school and the one that's just north of there would still be within that existing pressure zone. Um, that exists, you know, we would keep that within the existing zone, so those numbers probably won't change a lot.
Okay.
What will change those numbers is those water main replacement projects that we had.
Mm-hmm.
We've prioritized because we're replacing all of those four inch mains with eight inch mains. So even at the lower pressures that they have, they will provide more water because the, just because of the volume capacity of those eight inch mains versus the four.
So that area is attainable, minus the lumberyard, that area would be attainable with a water main upgrade.
Correct, yep.
And then the, the southeast corner fire flows.
That would be attainable with pressures.
With the pressure, because the, the water mains in that area are the current up-to-date
Yes.
type of requirements.
That's right.
And then for, to extend the, the water service area further out to accommodate, um, growth and such, that, that served area would, would come from all the high pressure area then, because, because I'm just, I'm just thinking that the existing older part of town would remain as the low pressure forever, more or less.
If we did that, then we would actually, if we were, if we ended up going up or down, and once we start doing these zones, the new ones could, we could create some low pressure zones in any new part that we wanted to, with those relief valves. One of the concerns I have, when you start talking about sixty, seventy pounds of pressure, that starts to create leaks. And yes, your, your rubber gaskets and stuff in your houses that you have to be replaced, but if they get a little bit of a leak and then their water bill is gonna go way up, like I said before, I know a guy in Cedar Rapids that has to replace faucet washers every two or three months because he's got ninety pounds of pressure there, and if he don't, he gets these leaks in his water bill bills.
I think if you're, typically if we keep within seventy to eighty, it's usually, we usually don't care about that many those problems too much, I think that's what I have in my house, and I usually, I don't have any issues. When you do get to ninety, uh, you know, eighty-five, ninety plus, that's when we start to see those issues, and so we that would be the concern I would have if we just had one pressure zone within the city is we would, you know, the city would want to provide, you know, high enough water for the customers that are in those ridge, used zone ridge areas, but then you would be getting up close to that seventy, eighty, ninety PSI, depending on how high you want to go.
Everything's related to the elements.
Yeah, so.
The ground is flat.
Yeah.
So let's, let's say we, for the fire flows, which I think are one of the target things we'd want to go for.
Okay.
Of the, um, for the fire flows, as the population increases, I, I see we have a hundred and twenty thousand gallons fire flow for, what is that?
Uh, that would be, that would be for the.
That's the current population, now does that change with population increase, or just the fact you have one fire?
It's, uh, it's building type use, space, uh, spacing, okay. So that plays into it, not population.
Okay.
But that's the.
As we expand, so more houses, so that will play into it.
That's the tricky part about how much water storage you need is, and how much water storage will like, uh, you know, an SRF or DNR pay for is, you know, especially, you know, you currently don't have a lot of commercials, so that makes this discussion just slightly difficult, because we'd be planning for more future growth in that area, but like, commercial lots take, require a lot more fire flow, unless there's a sprinkler system, but even then, they still have a huge demand. And so that's where your extra storage comes in, and that's the, the tricky part to, to try to piece, you know, that puzzle together is like, well, how much extra do you want to pay for at the city, so you have adequate fire flow volume and pressures versus, you know, how much you use on a, a, just a regular day, you know, that. So that's where, as you have more commercial starts coming into the city, it's important to kind of keep up with how much fire flow or fire volume you potentially will need. Because if you have a fire at those commercial establishments, they're gonna heat up a lot of, you know, I know, I know Norway, they said they use like a hundred thousand gallons when the apartment building went up in flames, so that drained them, they had no water pressure.
Right.
So it's those situations where, you know, you wanna have enough, and so that's where, you know, you currently have eighty-three, you're projected to, to, um, have have eighty-three percent of your water storage allocated to either fire flows, regular usage, or commercials, so how comfortable does the city want, is with that? And how much do you want to, if you want to increase it, to make that number, you know, seventy-five, fifty, you know, fifty percent, you know, those are I don't have a hard fast rule where you have to maintain X.
Well, and for the fire flows then, for the commercial side of it is, are there templates or examples for the type of, of, um? That's right, that's fine.
I guess, it just occurred to me to be no longer ever, if it's not a meeting.
Well, yeah, it's, it's fine. So back to the, so for example, the type of a, uh, commercial, is there a, a template for a particular type of building, let's say you have a grocery store, or you have a grain facility, or you have
Yeah.
auto repair shop? Because we, we know that the, the fire flow for the lumberyard is rather high, or is a bigger number, of course, so.
That's why the six A grain was down there, we had the grain elevator on the end of Main Street.
Okay, well.
So, so here.
I'm just wondering if, if you could plot out certain types of industry.
Uh, so yeah, so actually that's listed in our report. Um, residential properties, uh, it, it's anywhere from fifteen, five hundred to fifteen hundred gallons per minute, and those are based on how far apart the buildings are, so if your building is less than ten feet, then they recommend fifteen hundred gallons, and then for every ten feet, they knock five hundred gallons off. So by the time you get to the five hundred gallons per minute, then your, your buildings are, your homes are thirty feet apart. For non-residential, if you have a sprinkler system, they recommend the one thousand seven hundred and fifty. And if you have a, if you don't have a sprinkler system, then it's thirty-five hundred gallons per minute.
Okay.
So those are the.
And that's for any, any type of business?
Though, yeah, that's just their blanket general, the, you can go through a whole calculation and say, I have this building, I have, you know, these type of things, and it'll give you a different number, but the, you know, from a simple planning perspective, then I would just use these, those two numbers for, so recommends.
What about, does it mention anything about, say, a eightplex or a sixteenplex two-story? Something like that?
I would start to air, I would start to say those are probably closer to that thousand five hundred gallons, is what I would start to plan for those to be, because your structures are starting to become less, they're, they're, they're closer together.
Okay, so, so looks, I mean, just looking at those, those numbers, the the one thousand gallons per minute for the southeast corner of the city, that requirement, that would, we definitely wanna be above that. I mean, we'd wanna have, say, twelve hundred and fifty gallon flow at, say, in that neighborhood. And then generally, that would also allow that amount almost anywhere in the high pressure zone with the water main improvements, probably.
Yep, yeah, we would probably have to map it out a little bit to see home and elevation difference, you know, if we, we plan for twelve hundred gallons a year, does that give us twelve hundred gallons over here, how's that?
So if we, just thinking, if we shot for the seventeen hundred and fifty at the school, that would pretty much cover our entire city then with the fire flows.
Yeah, the school's gonna be, that's, that ends in, that's in that existing
Low pressure.
Low pressure zones, that'll be a different challenge to get that there.
So we pull it out, unless we just expand the main from part to part.
Yeah, we'd have to, to even get close to that. So the way, the way I would envision that, getting to that number would be, like, you have two pressure zones, we'd have an eight inch, there would be a PRV, and we'd have, have set up a couple different hydrants so the fire department could pull from a couple of different areas.
We had that high pressure line going down Railroad Street, we could pump that, run the line halfway, but not there, put a hydrant on the north end of the
Well.
school somewhere, to give us better fire control, or PRV on the east side of that.
Well, however, when you get there, just having the goal of
Yeah.
mapped out as to what we want to, to see, and then see what options are actually viable.
That's, that's the other thing, can we do something like a nice long-range plan and get optimum, and then try to come up with a phasing project so that we're not doing this in phases? Get as much done as we can within the budgeting constraints that we've got, and looking especially at the fact that if we do grow, can we capture TIP and use TIP and have this plan all ready to go? So that if financing is available, and it's not gonna be tax dollars, it's gonna be TIP dollars, I wanna take advantage of that.
So I guess I, I feel like I've, we've kind of provided that within both these reports, but then also the CIP, because that's how we've prioritized all of the, these works. So if there's something different you would like to see, then I, I guess I would.
Like you said, you've got these priorities there, and we can separate them out and kind of put a dollar amount with each one of them.
And that's, a lot of that's already in the CIP, so, I mean, obviously, we'll keep updating those, and
Sure.
you know, as we get closer, we can provide a more detailed, uh, you know, cost, um, but, you know, for now, we'll just be kind of those overall.
Thing we need to do with stuff like that, though, is once we have a, a number, it's all gonna be proportional. We can see the different number, because all of those numbers are gonna change, given the economy, the
Yeah.
how the costs go, but if we do have a one-time thing with them there, then we know that this is gonna be fifty percent, this one, this is gonna be forty, and then we could work those into our budget as necessary. Yeah, thank you.
So with all this discussion about like the fire, you know, needing, needing water to fight fires, and then the numbers that Dave was talking about, about population growth and what we can how many people we can provide more now, and you know, those, those are some big numbers that he, they're out as far as how many people. Is that, can we dig deeper into that, or I don't know if, if that's how we should look at it right now, or if there, you know, it just sounds like it's a much more complex issue, and how do we wrap our heads around what, what you're saying, or how, you know what I mean?
Yeah, he's, he's definitely thinking about it slightly different than how I look at it. Um, he, it's not that he's wrong, it's just a different way of, because I look at it more, and what we typically do is we look at more of like, uh, land type growth, so like, the city is planning on developing a hundred acres, this hundred acres is fifty percent residential, fifty percent commercial, okay, well, based on that, then I look, because that's, so I, I put a memo together, that's how I have it all broken out. Um, where it's, you can provide additionally, um, I'm looking at this one, for example, um, you know, the city can grow by ninety-five units, ninety-five homes, you know, you can, that's what you can build, right, so that's what you have capacity for.
Right.
Or, um, so, hold on, let me, um, so, so based on that eighty, eighty, so you eighty-three percent used or spoken for, based on platted areas and currently built, you're using, you have eighty-three percent spoken for, so, like, the scenario, the first scenario would be, you could add ninety-five single-family units, plus um, some combination of either fifty-nine multifamily units or five acres of commercial. So yeah, he, he's looking at his people, so you, we would just take that and multiply each unit by, uh, you know, a number of people.
That's the water treatment plant.
That's storage.
Oh, that's storage.
That's storage.
That's storage.
So, um, where, so if you're looking at it from, if you, if the city is just growing from a residential side of things, you probably have enough, it, where, where it gets tricky is how much fire flow, because like, that number, that eighty-three percent is for sixty thousand gallons, so if you add, if you double, triple, quadruple that, and that percentage keeps, will, you know, obviously keep going down. Cause you, you only have, um, actually, even doubling that would wipe out your remaining storage, because you would only have forty-six thousand gallons of remaining storage, so potentially one fire takes out that remaining storage, depending on how much you use. But if you were to, say, go into, you want a commercial and industrial, like, those numbers start to change, how much residential you could do, so if you just wanted to do commercial, you know, you could currently have capacity about thirteen acres of commercial development, and that all, and that really depends on what you're bringing in, if you're bringing in storage facilities, there's no water, then that's different than bringing in a gas station with a car wash, technically. So that's where, that's where the, it gets tricky with, um, how much capacity you have left as a city for waters, because there's, there's several pieces to add to that puzzle. So obviously, right now, if you were to have a fire, the water plant's kicking on and you're producing water as fast as you can to make sure that your, you know, you have that sixty thousand gallons.
And that's right now? As, without taking any, you know, any new potential, commercial.
All Stone Ridge is accounted for in that number.
But only with existing?
Nope, I, so that is all the platted areas over at Stone Ridge, that's a part of that eighty-three percent, so if within the year that's built out, then that's included in that number.
I guess my thought is, is that I get where he was going, but I think it's a little, you know, more complicated than just, um, thinking of it and
Right.
you know, how many people are here.
Right, because I.
As we develop a commercial, commercially and, um, hopefully residential also, but, you know, it's not just.
And that's, and that was why, at the time, we went with, let's add more storage to boost the pressure was, so that the city was ready for that growth, because, you know, we, we kind of you, you had some growth that the residents were not necessarily thrilled with the, the pressure, and you know, we're still talking about this seven years later, and have, and we haven't moved forward with, and there's other events that have contributed, but you know, it's just, um, I, I would like to. I I would like to at least recommend the option for the city to be proactive and make sure they're ready for those growth, that growth that they can have. Because as, you know, when commercial developers come in, they don't like to wait. You know, they want to go, they want to go yesterday.
With, in the, let's say, the recommended number four or whichever is. Have we done any, have you done anything for the time it would take to build it out to completion, where it's the. I think there were some phases, like the recommend the priority areas, there were some phasing there, was it five years to completion? Something on that nature, or was it, am I wrong on that?
Um, so let's see.
What is it?
I would say it's a three-to-four-year window from start to finish.
For just the new one?
Yeah.
Just the new water tower?
Yeah.
Really?
Because we have to, it's designed permitting construction, and the thing with the water tower is they. There's some things that are very seasonal dependent, so that's what skews that number, like painting, they can't paint it right now, they can build the tower, but they can't paint the tower. So like, you have to wait for, you have to pay on how it all laid out, like, that's where some of that extra time comes in. DNR can be slow in permitting. Sometimes they're fast, sometimes they're slow, so some, we, you know, if we can get everything out and going and through them quick, you know, like it could be a one-to-two-year project. The tower is what's really going to drive that schedule. If you just do a booster pump. I'd say two to three years, just because still, we have to go through a slight revision to our report, make sure DNR is kosher with it, go through the design. They're permitting again for construction, and then the construction of a booster station is. That's probably a twelve-month project, just depending on, that, then it becomes a electronics question.
And that's just the booster station, not the booster station plus the ground storage chain, booster station alone is a two-to-three-year time?
I would, that would, yeah, that would be what I would shoot at.
So it's not like we can put in the booster station. Well, it'd be in two to three years if we made the decision today, right?
Yeah.
And then just quickly make a decision to increase our, uh, storage, perhaps, because then it would then be another.
It'd be another two, I would add two years to it, yeah.
Years, so it's not, okay, well, that, I think that's an important. Piece of all this is how long it'll take, I guess I.
It's really funny, one of the things, I want to, you said seven years we're still looking, that number's wrong, it's thirty.
Oh, well.
This started in nineteen ninety-four, we haven't fixed it yet, I mean, it's exactly the same as what.
I was just going off the recent report.
Yeah, that's your report, and I understand that, yeah, this is, this is a thirty-year thing going, one of the concerns that I have is no matter what kind of a decision you make, and I've seen this in the past. We make a decision to move forward and start on this, and like you said, everything's going to be a three- or four-year project. We get a new election every two years, so no matter what one council does, and I've seen four councils put money in the budget and try to replace those old cast iron mains, and then. There's an election and people are, oh, we're not going to spend that money, and it gets put somewhere else and they don't give a place, so I. You know, that's a problem with government and with the way things are happening now, that no matter what kind of a decision we make, it's subject to change based on. The environment and whoever's in charge at the time.
Yep, and then some of that time is is going to be funding to, um, the funding agencies are really swamped, like, uh, I would typically, you know, I I still recommend using. State revolving funds, SRF, and their process is very streamlined, but it does take.
Another thing that a lot of the people don't understand is we got into big trouble with government now because water is an enterprise fund. And that's something that people don't understand what that means, and that means that you have to go through junk hoops and hoppers to use any kind of tax money. Water improvement stuff has to come out of the water building, and you're going to raise the bills to do this, you're not raising the taxes, you're raising the water bill.
You can use bond, different bonds for it.
Yes, and you can use TIP to pay back bonds if you've got somebody that can organize that, but again, there's planning that needs to be done, and that's where.
That, that, and that's.
That process and having people in place to do the work.
Yeah, you would, I, I will admit that that side of funding is not my, you know, D, I know that it's there, it can be used, I know how to go. I do the SRF stuff all the time with the bonds and the TIPS, that is very much a.
That's one of the problems that accidents have, because as a small town, we just don't have the resources to to keep looking into that part of it.
There, there are some outside resources, uh, bond councils and stuff that are really good, but it does also, you know, the city has to have a hand in some of that too, so.
And for the water main replacements, does the cost, like, I see priority one, two, three, four, for those, um, estimated costs. Does that include the street recabs and that sort of thing typically, is it pretty much a turnkey thing, are we looking at that's only for water?
No, all, all of the AOPCs do have street costs, street rehab costs included. They're very much a high overview of what I think it's going to take, now, once we get to N, you know, we might need to remove less streets or more streets, so. There, there's something accounted for, um, until we get into the detailed design, I can't guarantee, like, I have, I might have too much, I might have enough, so.
Because.
That wasn't a complete main replacement, you need to keep in your phases, like you were going down, hey, First Avenue and Second, but not Main. So then you still have to go back in and.
Main, Main Street has always been an elephant in the room because of the downtown area, and as soon as you touch it, then we have to make that whole thing ADA compliant, which is, um, very large undertaking. The underground stuff is easy, it's the building fronts and all of that to deal with that it's not, uh, it's doable, uh, it's just at a cost.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you have to build a front, build a front, eight feet out, the whole block.
Well, I would say that.
Can't put about, we've got designated alleys in, on, between Main, First and Second, if we run the stuff down the alleys rather than the street. I guess some problems with still repair later on, but.
So there's, there's, there's ways we could get around touching streets. There, but it's kind of one of those things where. There's, there is a lot of surface work that's still, that does need to be done regardless, so. It's something we could do if we had to, because we can always bore it in or something and then hope we don't hit anything that we have to open the street up. But it's always seemed like a better idea for the city to try to undertake that as one large project.
Well, there would be advantages to having that re, that area rehab for several things, and the surface water issues.
That'd be part of our overall project, I would like that, you do a, a complete rebuild of Main, which a lot of the towns this age are doing anyway.
Okay, I thank you, Jim, so, but as far as the, you have the water, the surface water issues, the sewers.
Yeah.
You know, they're just old things underneath the ground, it's, and then the ADA and just the atmosphere of the, of the area, so if. If that were improved, there's probably funding mechanisms also to absorb part of that cost, it's been encouraged.
There are different, um, funding avenues for that kind of.
So you have to look at it as a package deal rather than just water only, but I guess, um. My, my concern with the. Is that some of the, the water main areas through there. Are some areas, you know, we've, we've had surface water issues and things like that, so.
Yeah, so we did, we can fix other issues as we're going through some of these water, good water mains, if we find them or, you know, if they're a problem up front.
But that would mean additional cost or different.
Depends on the scope of it, because we could also find other ways to reduce, like, street repair costs by boring some of these water mains in, type of thing, so.
But is, does SRF money flow into the, any street repair, or does, or does it have to be only for the water, so, do you know about that?
If you're doing it as a part of the water main replacement, I believe you can get it paid for. It's been a while since I've had to have done that, so I don't know what, I don't know what their current limit is for touching the street along with the water main.
And what's the, what's the advantage of, of the SRF loan situation right now?
It's historically, uh, been a low-interest loan that the city could get, um, they used to be fixed at like one point, like two percent. It's currently shifted to more of a market value, um, but the market value is not the same market value as what you would go to, like, the Atkins Bank again. It's, it's still been shown to be less than what you get as a, from a private bank, it's just not fixed anymore.
Okay.
First, second, third, fourth alleys. As we're going through these, I think we've got them all marked down for repair and replacement. As we're moving forward, I noticed lead pipe on some of them, there's going to be a push to get rid of lead pipes, I don't think the mains are lead, I think the mains are cast iron.
Yeah.
But all the service lines are lead.
We've never found one.
Oh, well, I just.
I had most all those, a lot of those basements.
I just emailed today that there was a lead pipe on.
Main Street and Fourth, Cherry Town has lead pipe going in, I took a picture at seven two.
Yeah, we do have some.
I don't know about the hardware store, it's copper, the curb stuff. It's the curb stuff, and I don't know what's inside, and I don't know what J's is, the J's comes clear in from the third street of the alley.
That's copper, that curb stuff.
The curb stuff is copper, but his service line is lead.
I must change somewhere in the top, because on his side of the curb stuff is copper.
Well, I think that's, that'd be a separate thing to take care of.
But I'm just. As we're going forward, if there's money to replace that, I think we need to keep, and if we're capturing that, then do some main repair at the same time, if we're going to have to do some digging.
When the city wants to start doing hidden, is prioritized, I think it'd be a good time to have discussions about finding those mains and trying to do, uh, a joint project with replacement of the water mains. To replace some of those services, because you do have twelve years essentially to get it, get them replaced for EPA.
The mains and the service lines.
Service lines.
I was told today it's a lot shorter than that, by somebody impressed and who's on the go.
Well, okay, I don't, the, the general EPA order is twelve years. I don't, but some people may have consent decrees.
Yeah, well, this, well, being told today wasn't very good news.
Yeah, I don't.
I mean, something comes down from the federal or the state level, we need to be able to.
There's already, there's already money available.
Lock watching that and capture that and work that into our plan there.
Okay, all right.
Timeline, when do we need to, when we make a decision or talk about this again?
It's kind of, I guess, I guess, uh. I have, uh, I need to update that cost for that other standalone option for over by the fire station. What other information do you need from me for you guys to proceed, I'm ready to go whenever, I just need a decision on which way you want to go, so I can either. Adjust the scope and fee that I provided or leave it as is type of thing. The schedule's kind of up to, to you guys, because you don't have a, you're not under like a DNR. Compliance schedule, so it's just really how fast do you want to move on the project in whatever form the councils wants to move on it, so.
Kind of like just putting it into the capital improvement plan and getting it into the budget, working the money.
Which we've, we've had this project on the, in the capital improvement plan for the last couple of years, so just trying to. Peek at the ball rolling again and trying to see where you guys want to go, so I don't, Trevor unfortunately wasn't able to be here, so, but, you know, it seems like David, EJ had some ideas, and so I don't know what it's going to take for. The five of you to kind of come up with one path forward, but.
I'd like to see us have some meetings about what goals we want to hit, because it seems to me that drives what options are available. As well as the, um, the makeup of your analysis on the, on the current. And timeline of the water, like, the, the makeup of, uh, whether you have the commercial type, residential, you know, those mixtures. Because, um, you know, that would be important to us to make, make that decision.
Yeah, I, I, I think I'm trying to, I don't know, I'm standing forward, I have a memo that I have that breakdown, I don't think I've sent to you guys or not.
Right, I've seen the, the memo on the requirements for all the different pieces, but as far as. You know, starting with your analysis, your, your mixture that you had.
Yeah.
And see if that was.
Talking like that, have you seen this memo, it's got these numbers?
I'd have to look at it and see if that was the same.
But this kind of, I have a memo, but it's dated October sixth, twenty twenty-three. Because there were some questions at, after the, the presentation I did last September about the capacity and where you're at, and so those numbers I was spouting out were eighty-two point six percent, all that comes from that. Memo, and then I, I put together some scenarios based on that, like, how, how would you get to a hundred percent? And could you do, you know, what, what's already been city limits? You know, you can expound upon that if you wanted to and say, you know, you want more of this or more of that, but, uh. You know, the, I guess, I think that memo answers a lot of the questions that you're having about capacity, and that's.
Right.
I guess I'm not sure why it's, if you guys don't have it.
No.
We, yeah, we have the, that report there, but I wasn't just sure if it was, if that listed the analysis you'd made. For some of these numbers, I didn't know if that correlated, because there were margins of more of this and more of that, so.
I guess in my mind, that's what, what it is, I don't, I, I apologize if it's not, but.
I'll take a look at it again and see, because, um, and then we also have the issue of the school, you know, currently, we, we're low on fire flow there, but. If, for the school, future plans, have they, has anything been factored in on, on that, if, would it still be the seventeen hundred and fifty? Minimum requirement for, for what are the size of school that you have?
The fire flow would stay as well.
Can we increase the size of the school?
They increase size of school, but if they continue with the sprinkler system inside the school, then that number stays the same. If their additions don't have sprinkler systems, then I could just jump to that.
I mean, that's something we really need to look at then too, as a council, watching with our building codes and if we get growth, especially commercial growth. Make sure that we require those internal sprinkler systems so that it doesn't impact our fire protection like it would if we didn't. We should be able to do that with our building codes.
Uh, you'd have to, yeah, be able to, so I don't know what yours currently requires, it does require, I know the new fire station has a sprinkler system and it's set up in it, but.
Yeah, is any fire station factor in? But, but we. Can. Provide service for, or that's probably not in the numbers that you have.
Um, no, because we don't, we don't necessarily look at, like, what kind of fire department the city has, we're just looking at it as a. We're looking at total gallons and how many gallons you have and what do you have in your city that requires usage, whether it's residence, commercial. Industry, um, and then we're looking at fire, like, how much.
You're just looking at water capacity as far as the fire.
We look at your passing.
When you start talking about the fire department and stuff, that's the eye of the show, that's not.
That's outside of the, are what we typically look at, because there, you know, a lot of small communities, they don't have, they. They don't have, uh, they don't have, you know, their, they don't have a full-time fire department, so they rely on other communities, but they still require fire, fire, fire.
Okay. Okay. Well, for some of the questions, tonight I'd like to do a question and answer type of format. Like, with, whether the school, any additional school sizes or locations would require. Like, whether the school, any additional school sizes or locations would require adjustments to any numbers if needed, and then, um, pull out to some target number for the, the fire flow, because that's, that's the, because it seems like if we have the fire flow, then the pressure issue will go, you know, comes along with.
They can go hand in hand, yes. Yeah, if you, as a council, want to compile all those questions, you want answers to, I'd be more happy to put, put something together. I, I don't know, I, I don't.
No, I get you.
I think we, yeah, we, to your point, we need to decide where we want to go as a city. And I think we all have different opinions on what that looks like, and that's the challenge right now.
Yeah, I mean, my recommendation would stay the same, but I'm not opposed. I think whatever you guys want to do is what we'll do. But I, you know, I'm not going to change my recommendation, because I think that's what's best for the city. Like I said, if you don't want to go all the way, then I think we should at, I would recommend the city at least set it up for future.
Well, this has been really helpful, thank you.
No problem.
All right, thank you, Nick, appreciate that. Thank you, Todd, and, um, so I believe that would be appropriate. I just want to talk to you two about any, I've kind of heard your ideas as to start to come together as far as the next steps.
Yeah, I guess it's, it puts it into perspective when, when you look at how long these projects take. I think that's an important piece of this is, um, you know, the, the recommended project with the new water towers, what, three to four years, did you say? And then the combination, you know, the water tank and the, or even just the booster pump alone would be a two to three year. So I think we need to think about that, because before we had that conversation, it's like, okay, we could do the booster pump now and fixing an issue that we have now. But it's not even fixing it now, it's fixing it in two years from now, and then what, what issues do we have at that point? We don't know, and there's, there's no way to know those, but, um, that's where, in my mind, we think about, sure, we, we don't have a ton of commercial right, right now, today. In my mind, I would love to have more. I think starting to, to gain some more. And I think once we gain more, then there's going to be even more interest, and that's where I'd like to see the city go, which, which means we need more capacity and the pressure.
Yeah.
And it's just looking a little bit further down the road for me. I understand, uh, their, their perspective too, and I think what's really kind of confusing is, um, is the population calculations that we're having. But I'd like to maybe wrap my head around that a little bit more and kind of figure out where that piece fits versus, you know, the commercial development and kind of ideas of where we want to go.
Yeah.
I think that, um, well, I don't know, I don't know what to say there, it just is a different conversation completely when you're thinking strictly kind of people versus, you know.
I remember when I put the report together, I had a current council, uh, not a, not a current council, but a councilor at the time asked me, if we were to do everything that was in that twenty nineteen report, how long would it take? And I told him a decade. Just because by the time you get, you get started, you go design, construction, permitting, funding. If you do things just as one, each thing as a project, it's, it's easily a decade just to get through every, all those. And that's not including looking pretty well. At some point, you're going to need to go well, it's also, and that's not including adding the ROs get into the plan, which we could include into some of these things, but I mean, that could potentially add time or just add cost to any one CIP. And then that doesn't include all the other stuff you'll have to do with the waste bar side, or, you know, that, those, these are all.
Well, when you consider that in one decade, I was looking at our financial, um, history, which includes population because of the revenue side, but looking at that, there's, there's times when we had fifty percent growth in one decade. So, um, there, there is still interest in both residential and light industrial efforts within this area. And that's, uh, that's one of the factors we'd have to look at.
Yeah, I think the, the city, what, twelve years out, grow a little bit. That's how fast.
That's one of the problems that historically I keep seeing too, that if they try to, somebody will come in, now we've got a pressure problem, and people start complaining, we've got more and more people. They come in and on the council, they want to fix the pressure problem and solve it. Well, that's fine, by the time they do this Band-Aid or this cheapest plan, before that actually gets completed, we've already outgrown that. And then there's the other plan here, so the smarter thing is to be looking five, ten, fifteen years down the road and not necessarily do that, but say this is where we want to be and get the pressure and these other things as we can moving toward that goal. Otherwise, we're going to be outgrowing and we're still going to keep being behind the eight ball on it.
All right, well, thanks, everybody. I'll let you get back to the wind tonight. If there's any, uh, motion to adjourn, would we take that?
Second.
And since we have no quorum-
All in favor?
We will, um, just, I'll just declare the meeting is adjourned by consensus at eight thirty-four.